Order and open with plausible agents.
The plausible agents to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks to everybody for attending our hearing. This is the April 2nd, 2025 hearing of the Planning and Zoning Commission. And if you're addressing the commission during the meeting, may I ask that you step forward, use the microphone, and Lisa will swear you in first. We'll call.
Mr. Bobbs.
Here.
Mr. Browning.
Here.
Mr. Bush.
Here.
Mr. Mazzino. Ms. Rogers.
Here.
Mr. Smiley. Mr. Churex.
Here.
Thank you. We do have a quorum present. So moving on, old business, first item preliminary plan, application PP 25001, that will remain table.
That's correct. We didn't receive any submissions for that.
Okay. No, no indication of when it might be back or?
I think they were looking at next month's meeting.
Okay. It'll be there when, when they run.
Yeah.
Okay. That was the only old business item on the agenda. New business, item A, replat application, REP 25001.
All right. So we are looking at 206 Leasy Drive and 303 Levi Drive, part of the scenic view of state's plan development district. The applicant's requesting approval by replat pursuant to section 1113.48, task of code lot 7 and 8, the first phase of the city view state subdivision. If you look up here, these are the two parcels in question, and the larger one here in the back, lot 7, and then lot 8 right here, just as south of it. So again, the property is a part of the same view state's plan development district. As we know with plan development districts, the development text that was approved by city council kind of becomes a governing document for that subdivision. Lot 7 is 303 Levi Drive. It's 5.265 acres in size, has access to the southwest into the private street Levi Drive. It's currently vacant. There's some wetland areas within the property. There's kind of two enclosed proximity on like the western side, western center area. And then there's, sorry, eastern wet central area. And then there's one partially on the western border. Then there's lot 8, which is 206 Leasy Drive. It's 2.495 acres, access to the southeast onto the private Leasy Drive. And there's a single family home that was built in 2023 in that parcel. So the proposal is to replat lots 7 and 8 into lot 7A and 8A by moving the existing north lot line on lot 8 to the northeast, merging 1.8 acres from lot 7 into lot 8A. So lot 7A, after, if should this be approved, lot 7A will be 3.464 acres, and lot 8A will be 4.296. The existing access points are going to remain, however, lot 7 has reduced wetland buffers between the two wetlands that are going to be in the center. Those are five feet on the west wetland, and it's going to be on the east wetland, and only in parts between the two where they're close. The remaining buffer is going to remain at that 25 feet per code in the development text. Here's a look at the existing plat. So we have lot 8 on the south here, and lot 7. In the north with those existing wetlands, so you can see there's these two enclosed proximity here. The proposed replat is going to take that property line, which would have been here, move it up, kind of bisecting the easternmost wetland. And then the wetland buffer between these two is reduced to allow for a driveway access. So the border zoning appeals did approve a variance to allow that wetland buffer February of this year. For the applicant, the owner of lot 8 wishes to purchase portion of lot 7, which would require the stream crossing between the two wetlands. And they also say the intent of the overall development was to provide a secluded homesites for each of these, and the homesites in the adjacent lots. Two lot 7 are getting quite close. The developer wishes to move the homesite northwards away from those adjacent homes. Proposed crossing is going to be a bridge and not directly impact the stream or wetland themselves. So the variance was approved with a couple of conditions. One, that the applicant submit the replat showing the reduced wetland buffers. Two, the applicant shall provide copies of any required permits from the approving authority or official documentation from said authority that no permits are required. Three, the applicant obtain a necessary permits within one year. As part of our review staff put out the following comments. So of course, pursuant to section 1113.42, anytime you're making changes to existing lot lines or conditions on a planted subdivision, you have to go through the replat process. Pages, a couple of comments on the plat themselves. The pages are reversed. The title sheet needs to be page one. And then we'll just need to add a couple of notes from the original plat referencing some details to this plat. Those being B, E, and F. And then regarding the conditions of approval on the variance, so condition of approval rule number one was met by this supplemental they've submitted the replat. Two, the applicant has provided a copy of communication with the Army Corps of Engineers, which would be the approving authority in this case, stating that the spanning the stream and building within the buffer would not require permit only if they are directly impacting either of those, which they are not in this case. And should this replat be approved, the applicant would need to submit a mylar for signatures, which would need to be recorded within 30 days of the final signature. Didn't receive any comments from any other departments or agencies. For the surrounding properties, to the north, you have R15 medium high density residential, which are future sections of Forest Ridge. To the east, south, and west, you'll have further lots in the scenic view of state's plan development district. So should the planning and zoning commission choose to recommend or approve the applicant's request, all conditions may be considered. The applicant submit replat mylar in accordance with sections 1113.39, 1113.44, the task of code, after comments from planning and zoning staff have been addressed. And to pursuant to section 1113.49, task of code, the replat has to be recorded in 30 days of the latest signature. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Good. Thank you. Questions for the staff and Jerry?
Not at this moment, no sir.
Tim? Frank? Okay, thank you. Next, we have an opportunity for the applicant to address the commission. If you wish. And again, Lisa will swear you in, and then? Okay. And if you'd start with your name, address, please.
Yeah, my name's Joe Rick, and I own the property at 206 Drive. So I'm one half of the party interested in the replat. Yeah, so I, I, I'm not sure that there's a whole lot that needs to be added to what was already summarized. By the day drive from our perspective, as we move into that subdivision, to have more privacy regarding, you know, the location in the homes. Right now, my home right there at lot 8, currently in, under construction. Lot 10 has a home directly across the street, very close to the front. So, you know, we, we can see each other there. Lot 9 will start construction, as I understand, pretty soon. And their home is going to be about 300, 350 feet up the hill off of the cul-de-sac bit. My home in lot 10 is in. If, if the replat isn't approved, there's two potential homesite locations on lot 7. The one that it would be just to the south of the eastern wetland there. So if the person that purchases that property decides to build, there's going to be a high density of homes, in my opinion, right there. With that being one of the potential homesites. So if the, if the replat is approved, given 1.8 acres of current lot 7 over to lot 8, that pretty much keeps the density much, much less than if somebody would have, would have built on that height homesite location that's currently available on lot 7. I walk lot 7. It does require a, a longer drive, so that the developer and I have had those discussions. We went through some very conceptual engineering to lay out a driveway that starts in the lower cul-de-sac of Levi Drive. Kind of meanders between those two wetlands there. And then depending on the home, it would dictate what you do with the, with the driveway to get up to the second to the northern homesite locations on lot 7. It, it is a buildable lot. During my career, I worked in heavy highway construction, a lot of roadway, bridge construction. And we have, it actually helped to meet how to develop or design the bridge crossing along the stream. So we, we studied lot 7 after the replat, and we think that it's, it's, it's very solvable and it should support the replat application. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Good. Thank you. Questions? Tim?
No.
Frank?
Nope.
Yeah. Yeah, I have none. Jerry?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you. If no other questions, time for deliberation discussion. Anybody have any comments once or so? If not, then entertain a motion for action.
I move that we improve replat application number REP dash 25 dash 001 pursuant to section 1113 dot 48 of task of code with the following two modifications.
I think we have a motion and second to approve the application with the two modifications listed in the staff report. Discussion on the motion. We'll call.
Ms. Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Bobbs.
Yes.
Mr. Churex.
Yes.
Mr. Browning.
Yes.
Mr. Bush.
Yes.
Motion passes, and that's approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, final plan application, FP 25001.
Of course, so we're looking at section four, Forest Ridge. It's zoned R15 medium dense, medium high density residential. They're requesting approval of the final development plan pursuant to section 1113.28 of task of code for section four of the Forest Ridge Plan Development District. So if you look up here, this is the section that they are looking at developing. So you got a 310 over here to the west, the first three sections, and now we're looking at section four, Forest Ridge. So the preliminary plan was approved in September of 2022 for 254 single family lots over about 128 acres over seven proposed phases with a gross density of 1.98 units per acre. There were several variants approved as part of that overall development. For the BZA, they got a branch to allow for some street design items that they needed to. So some intersections needed to deviate from the angled intersection requirements, reduce intersection separation at a few points and to allow three sections of the road to have less than the amount of 100 foot spacing between reverse curves. They also got a branch to allow the developer to submit a preliminary plan without a tree survey and replacement plan and delay it until the construction plans for each phase. However, as we know, our current tree replacement code is unenforceable as a result of that circuit court case. So the need for that variance is nullified, no tree replacements are required. They did get a couple of variances from city council, and these are relating to the residential appearance standards of the code. The one that we'll be looking at is the reduction in the number of driveways that must be grouped. So the city administrator designated shall approve deviations from this requirement if, if it is determined that driveway grouping is not possible or negatively affect functionality of the subdivision. Some other residential appearance standards variances. So the construction plans for section four, those were approved last month. Section four is going to consist of 45 single family lots over 18.628 acres, just over five of that being an open space and a little over three acres being within the right of way. Setbacks are per the approved preliminary plan, 30 feet up the front, five on the sides, and 30 on the rear. And section four is going to include the extension of Paloma Lane and the creation of Creekside Loop North and South. So again, this is the outline of the area of section four here. You've got sections one, two, three. Now we're moving on four. The remaining in the north being future developments. And here's kind of a look at the plan, the layout, as well as their street trees here. So we've got Paloma Lane being extended and Creekside Loop South and part of the north here. And then here's that illustrative plan that was included in the application as well. And here's just the general outline of where we are thus far with Forest Ridge. So sections one, two, and three have already been flated. They're okay to start building homes. Section four is pending there. Out of 254 lots, that puts us about halfway through the entire development. As part of the preliminary plan, there was a couple of conditions on that. The applicant address all comments from the planning zone department, city engineer, utilities, and the fire district. And after all questions and comments have been addressed, the applicant has to submit the revised development plan in a mylar copy to playing and zoning department for signatures. As part of our review staff would offer the following comments. The applicant's met the conditions of approval in the preliminary plan. And the construction plans for section four have been approved. Section 1113.23, on the plan itself, they need to show the width at the building line when the lot is on a street that's not at a 90 degree angle. So they just need to add that to the plan. That's the only comment we have in relation to the plans themselves. Following items have changed from the approved preliminary plan. There's a couple of utility easement locations that had to be adjusted from the preliminary plan per the final engineering comments and the onsite conditions. And then some of the wetland buffers were adjusted to meet the Corps of Engineers and OAPA permit approvals. So staff, including utilities, public service, and the city engineer reviewed the proposed driveway layouts to determine that those not meeting the grouping standards, which is eight out of the 45, would either interfere with the streetlight locations, stormwater devices, or cause driveway slopes in excess of 10%, which is the maximum per code, or create a side yard slope that would be too steep. 13 additional lots are not grouped as a result of either being odd numbers on the same side of the street, not having another to be grouped with, or that the driveway has to be oriented towards the lesser roadway classification per code. Didn't receive any comments from any other departments or agencies. Surrounding properties. So to the north is R15, which is the future development of Forest Ridge, section six and seven. To the east is Plan Development District, which is scenic view of states. To the south, you have R10 High Density Residential, which is the ravines at Hazelwood. And to the west, you have the previous phases of Forest Ridge, section three. So should the planning and zoning commission approve the applicant's request, the following conditions may be considered. The applicant address all comments from Public Service Department, playing and zoning staff. And then after all comments and questions have been addressed, the applicant shall submit a mylar copy that provides final plan to the planning and zoning department for signatures and records. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you. Questions for staff? Can I start with Frank?
No questions.
Thank you. Ma'am?
No.
Thanks.
Sure.
Um, I just wanted to ask this question. In between the different housing developments, is there any buffering going in there? Or is there any requirements for any buffering for existing houses?
On the south side there?
Yes.
Between like the ravines? So there's a little bit of existing tree foliage that's going to be retained on the south side, but there isn't specifically a buffer that they, that a requirement that they have to provide a buffer.
Okay. Because I did notice in the Harrison Township houses on the other, there's no buffering there either for the larger lots. Just wanted to make sure. We didn't require any buffering or anything?
No.
Okay.
Not as part of the preliminary plan.
Okay.
No other questions? Tim?
Just one around. I know there's future development planned there on the chart. I don't know what's in the north and the south of here.
Uh, the north side, yeah.
Yeah, the north side there. The, any concerns around EMT services or anything until that future development? It looks like we only got one entrance in there until that happens.
Yes. So I guess as far as the access here, really the only way to get in is here. But at least these dead end streets that? at least these dead-end streets, if they don't continue on with construction, section five, they have to put it in T-turnarounds to make sure that, you know, a fire truck or a trash or a school bus can get back out, get out. But as far as the, this would currently be the only way into this section of the subdivision.
And these, this one and the future five, six, and seven, are those factored into the sort of plan?
Yep, those are all accounted for. So when we came up with the sixty-five number, that was, you know, everything we have existing plus Forest Ridge, plus any of the other subdivision that were currently under construction, and that sixty-five was what was left after that.
Thank you. And I believe you pointed out that all of the requirements of the preliminary plan were met, so.
Correct.
This is, just make sure that that happened, I guess that's what.
Yeah, just accounting for any changes that had to happen as part of the engineering process.
Okay, thank you. Next, I have an opportunity for the applicant to address the commission. Again, Lisa will swear you in, and then start with your name and address.
Do you swear? Or are we just ready to give a search? Let's just accept.
Good evening. I really don't have anything to add.
Just for the record, your name and address.
And Joe West at my homes. We're wondering if my work happens. Again, nothing to really add to the presentation. It's our fourth phase that we're working through. We're really cooking through this one, so I'd expect this to be an episode of complete here, probably just a few more years potentially. City and staff have been wonderful to work with, as always. We will pick up the planning comments that they're going to take ours to the lot with them if it's ever submitted. So other than that, I have all the questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the commission? Anne?
No questions.
Jerry?
How are the sales of the lots right now that have, the ones that have already been approved?
Yeah, that's a good question. So we have thirty sales to date since everyone, pretty solid. There's nine residents that have moved into their homes and closed, so we have people living there. So yeah, they've been solid. I would probably be here as frequently as I am if it wasn't set up. Yeah, everything's going really well there. Obviously, we're picking up, and we're just getting through the really good lots.
No questions, sir. Tim?
Just around drainage with the variance and the setbacks and five feet on the sides, and I know the area very well there. Do you foresee any drainage issues from one lot to the other? I know there's a lot of elevation changes on your topo.
Yeah, definitely a challenge, to say the least. Lots of streams, lots of wetlands, lots of photography, so definitely a challenge, but we've been working with Allen and crew to make sure as well as our engineers, E M T, to work through any of those issues. We feel real comfortable that in terms of standard and air practices for water design that we're also got an issue. And if there are, like sometimes happens, you know, we're, we're closing off, fixes and everything, we'll make sure it doesn't happen.
All right, that's all.
Sounds like tonight might be a stress test.
Yeah.
Supposed to get a lot of rain.
Yeah, yes. I heard eight inches over the next couple days, which is probably a good monitor. Several, I guess, yeah. I'm good to be fine, I'm sure, Monday.
Frank? Anything else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion amongst ourselves on this? Comments? Points to bring up? No? If not, if we're ready to act on it, entertain a motion for action.
I'll open the door. I move that we approve the application number F P dash two five dash zero zero one pursuant to section twelve twenty five point one three of the TASCAL code with the following modifications if they are placed in the approval.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the application with the two modifications listed in the staff report. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Frank. Any discussion on the motion? Roll call.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mr. Bobbs?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Schurex?
Yes.
Mr. Browning? Yes.
The motion passes, and application is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, item C, rezoning application zero one twenty five oh oh one.
Of course, so the location of this is at 6,500 Taylor Road Southwest. It's currently zoned M one light manufacturing. Yeah, that's requesting approval to, recommendation of approval to rezone the property from M one to G B General Business pursuant to section twelve seventeen point ten of the TASCAL code. If you look up here, this little parcel in yellow is a subject parcel. You got Taylor Road off to the east here. The property itself is 0.72 acres, currently occupied by a single-story office building with shared access to Taylor Road to the adjacent property to the north. There's a existing asphalt surface parking with about 21 available spaces and a small fenced-in area off the rear of the structure. Little bit of zoning history, so it's been subject to multiple use variance requests over the years, most recently in 22 for a game store and event space, and in 2015 there was a use variance request for a daycare that was lent to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Neither of those were permitted uses in the M one zoning district, hence the use variance requests. The request in this case is to rezone from M one to G B General Business. Per the applicant, the intent is to establish a home health care agency with the structure serving as their main office. Per the applicant, the existing building is already configured to be an office, and they believe that the use and layout of the site will not be hazardous or hazardous to existing or future neighboring uses or will be served adequately by all existing public facilities. Additionally, they believe there will be no uses, activities, et cetera, that will be detrimental as the proposed use is just an office. They noted in their application for the auditor's website that the structure is classified as commercial office buildings, and included in the site, in the application is the site plan kind of showing the existing locations of the improvements. Right now, there aren't any other improvements reported to the site. So here's a look at the site plan that was included. This is just kind of showing the existing layout of the property. So you got the building here, parking out front, and then here's just a satellite image of the property, kind of showing the existing conditions on the lot. And then here's some photos from the roadway, so this is looking towards the northeast, northwest. This is kind of southwest, you can see the structure there, and this is looking directly south from the parking lot. As part of our review, staff put off the following comments. The future land use map recommends Flex Industrial, which is described as being intended for light industrial uses that require space for wholesale warehouse and clay manufacturing repair, and recommends both industrial and office uses. So the request of rezoning would be in line with the recommendations of the comprehensive plan. The applicant noted that the auditor's site classifies it as a commercial office building. There's a little bit of confusion with the auditor's website that's purely classifying like what the structure actually is, doesn't necessarily mean that the zoning is different. The included site plan also doesn't exactly reflect the existing conditions on the property. With the use variances, we noticed that when the building was originally built, there was going to be a three-foot mound on the south side of the property line. However, there's some overhead power lines right through that area that meant that that mound couldn't be constructed. Also, there's some of the striping of the parking lot, and it appears to be redone, and that could be addressed whenever they come in for the permits to establish that use on the property. The proposed use as an office for a home health care agency is permitted in G B but is not permitted in the current M one zoning, and then, as this is not a planned development district, not explicitly limited to that proposed use, any of the permitted uses of G B would be allowed, granted that they meet the other general requirements of code. So previous uses obtained use variances from the Board of Zoning Appeals as well, as they were not permitted in the M one zoning district. M one only allows retail office uses if they were subordinate to an overall manufacturing use on-site. Currently, the site only contains that existing office building. You'll notice in red here, we did have an additional comment that was noticed after staff reports went out. So under the description of purpose, the G B district, that's section twelve four nine oh one, states that G B district shall be located on an arterial thoroughfare as specified in the major thoroughfare plan. Our most recent thoroughfare plan, Taylor Road, is classified actually as collector. So the Planning and Zoning Commission may not place conditions upon a recommendation to council. Conditions placed upon a straight rezoning would constitute contract zoning, which is illegal, and then any following recommendation from Planning and Zoning Commission, the application has to go before city council for their final determination. Surrounding properties, the northeast, south, and west, they're all zoned M one light manufacturing. They're all currently occupied by various miscellaneous industrial uses. No conditions, since this is a straight rezoning. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you. Questions? First, I have. Tim?
No.
Frank?
Could you go back to your couple of slides where you talked about the arterial, right there?
Yes.
Should we read that here? Okay. So that's still in alignment with the zoning regulations? Is there anything that would be conflicting with what we have?
And when we noticed this, because it does say, and I'd say it says in the purpose section, not under general requirements, that anything on the G B district shall be located in arterial thoroughfare. To go through the criteria to approve a rezoning, it says, is it in compliance with the objectives or requirements of this code? To which we look at this, that would not meet that. So prior to the meeting, I spoke with the applicant and explained the situation, that it does put it in a weird situation, even though a G B is compliant from an office standpoint with the future land use map, there is this, this situation in the code that says it shall be on an arterial. So looking through that, their, their proposed use as a medical-type facility is permitted use in a P R O district, and a P R O district has no specific requirements in terms of the type of roadway classification that has to be on. So, and I don't want to speak for the applicant, but I think they're, they might look to amend their application. We can't do it on the fly, so we'd have to table it. But I think they're looking to, they would table the application, amend their application to come back to P R O, and then go back through the process and not have to worry about the arterial conflict. But again, I don't want to speak for the applicant on this one.
And then, just more curious, do you know why in the past they just didn't change the zoning? Why, why, why did they go the route, previous applicants gone the route of, you had exceptions versus changing the zoning to fit it?
On the previous comprehensive plan that was, that came out in 2006, it recommended industrial uses and only industrial uses. So one of the criteria with the use variance is kind of, why don't you just rezonate? Are you trying to kind of pull an end run and get around the rezoning process? Problem was, if they were to rezone it for, you know, the daycare or the game store, it would be contrary to the comprehensive plan. So it kind of puts it in a weird situation that, that's why they did the use variance, to say, we're just going to do this use, we're going to stay M one, but now that the comprehensive plan has changed and allows office uses, it's, it would then be in line to the comprehensive plan.
Okay, that's all I have. Thanks.
Thanks. Anne?
Yeah, I think, given that shall be required, you know, arterial, that's, that's kind of harder to overcome, so. One thing I, long-term, when we look at code updates, we might want to move that statement down into the general requirements just to avoid any confusion.
I don't disagree. Yeah.
But of course, that's future, that doesn't affect us on this one. Okay. Jerry?
No, everything's been asked and answered.
Okay, thanks. Next, we're going to ask the applicant to step forward. And again, Lisa will swear you in and start with your name and address.
Thank you.
Do you swear, or are we just ready to give a search?
I do, thank you. Good evening, everybody. My name is Robert DiCucciio. I'm the attorney for the property owners, K Investments. My address is 503 South High Street, Street 100, Columbus, Ohio, 43215. First, I'd just like to thank Mr. Fulton for bringing this to my attention. Admittedly, it got by me, it got by our architect. I apologize for wasting the commission's time here. Everything Mr. Fulton said is true. The only thing I'm here to do this evening at this point is to respectfully ask the commission to table our application so that we can amend it and change our request to be rezoning to a P R O district rather than G B. Other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and thank the commission for the time and ask that.
Thank you. Questions for the applicant? Anne?
No.
Frank? Tim?
None for the applicant. I want to go back to, I guess, if, if the applicant wants to go, this is a P R O district, will that be in line with the comp plan?
That would, yes. The Scott Brandon's plan recommends office uses, P R O is the kind of the office zoning district.
Okay. I'm good.
Jerry?
No, sir.
Thank you for coming. Sorry about the mix-up.
No problem, thank you.
So we've heard the applicant's request to table this, and if there are no objections, I will move that we table rezoning application zero one twenty five oh oh one. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Frank. Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yeah.
Mr. Bobbs?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mr. Schurex?
Yes.
That motion passes, and the application's tabled. Thank you. Thank you, Anne.
May everybody have a good evening, too.
That was the, the last of the new business items. We have no other business listed on the agenda. So the next item will be the approval of the meeting minutes for March 5th, 2025 hearing. Everybody have a chance to review those minutes? Are there any additions or corrections?
There's an S on the end of my name. That's okay. It's not the end of the world, I just noticed it because it's my name. And I know you want your records straight. I do.
Anything else? If not, I'll move that the minutes of March 25th, 2025, regular meeting be approved and amended.
Second.
Yeah. Discussion? Roll call.
Bobbs?
Yes.
Mr. Schurex?
Yes.
Mr. Browning? Yes.
Yes.
Anything else tonight? Good catch on the last one.
That was, that was Maha Bug, Bobbs.
Yeah. It's, yeah, I agree, it needs to be changed a little bit, but yeah, it's there.
I wonder why they didn't go with P R O district.
I don't know. I guess if you do G B, it kind of opens it up a little more in terms of uses, so it might have been that.
When I first talked to the applicant and the property owner, they had a couple different ideas of what they wanted to do, so I was like, you know, G B would allow for this, P R O would allow for this, but this might be a conditional use, so on and so forth. So they wound up going with G B because that allowed for the most. But now they're kind of focusing in on just the home health care agency office. If they go to P R O, it shouldn't be an issue.
Are you ready?
I'm ready. I make the motion, we adjourn to Wednesday, May 7th, 2025.
Second?
Second.
Frank? Roll call.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mr. Schurex?
Yes.
Mr. Bobbs?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Motion passes, and we adjourn.
I want to clear.